Oh. It's too bad she didn't send a video.
Hey Eric.
Eric? Yeah, lean in because with that window behind you, it's hard to see you when you lean back.
Oh, I just lost you.
Are you there Eric?
Uh oh.
Oh, now you're, you guys all froze for a second there Emmy.
Did you hear what I said Eric about when you lean back, it's hard to make, make out your face so, because of the light behind you?
Can you, can you shift so that there isn't a bright light as a backdrop?
Yeah.
Or, or close your curtains, your shades.
Oh. That's the nice thing about, I can rotate it over. Although I need all my stuff. I'll do a rotation here.
To another window.
Yep.
Is my back light okay Mark? What's right is it?
It's, yeah, you're sitting closer and the window is further away, so it's easier to see you.
When I shut one of the blinds.
And Laurie, I think you may have stepped away, we're going live on YouTube here in moments.
I was gonna sit outside, but I didn't know how that'd be.
Yeah Eric, that's better.
I'm, I'm switching right now.
Oh, Deb is in now too. Hi Deb. Hey Deb, can you hear us okay?
Doesn't look like her audio's on yet. Deb, are you there? You have to unmute.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm here.
Hey Deb, can you, um, can you pull a shade on that window behind you?
Yes, will do.
Hey and Deb, as long as we're at it, would you, um, you give us a quick voice check so we can hear you okay as well?
Um, you talk, yes, I'm fine. How's this work?
Yep, we sound, you sound good. Just wanted to make sure we could hear you, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Good evening everyone and welcome. We are the Otana School Board. This is Monday, it's March 30th, it's 5:30 PM. Eric, I will ask you to do attendance by a roll call vote.
Nikki?
Here.
Tim?
Here.
Jolene?
Here.
Mark?
I am here.
Christina?
I'm here.
Laurie?
Here.
And I myself is here. Uh, oh, and Logan?
Actually, we don't have Logan on tonight.
So, uh, all board members are present minus the student representative.
Thanks Eric. Uh, I'm gonna give Mr. Elstad just one quick second here to, uh, impose a, or superimpose a, an American flag on your screen. There we go. And if you would all please rise and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First up tonight would be to approve our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
A second.
So, Jolene moved and Eric seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor with an eye? Oh wait, it's a roll call vote. Sorry about that Eric.
Yep. Nikki?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Jolene?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Christina?
Aye.
Laurie?
Aye.
And I myself as an I. So 7-0.
Thanks Eric. We're gonna move on to item four, which is our mission moment. I'll turn things over to Mr. Elstad.
Sorry about that. So, um, I'm gonna go back and show you our mission moment for this month, which take me just a moment to get there again, sorry about that. Okay. Our mission moment for this month is actually really coming to us from 21st century, uh, teaching and learning for our students and I'm very proud, uh, this month to recognize Michelle Simon, who is a first grade teacher at McKinley Elementary. Recently, uh, Michelle was named the Minnesota Council for Social Studies Elementary Teacher of the Year. Uh, we're very proud of Michelle. This is a very esteemed honor for one of our educators. And a couple of things about Michelle, uh, she, as I mentioned, teaches first grade at McKinley Elementary. Uh, Michelle was recognized for her ability to develop and teach engaging integrated social studies units, such as the Grimm fairy tale unit, which students read stories, then they analyze photos of castles in Germany, and take on engineering challenges such as the Rapunzel's, building Rapunzel's Tower. Uh, Ms. Simon is a STEPS, STEM certified teacher and is a Gathie Institute, uh, top fellow. Uh, when asked of a little bit about, uh, her commitment to teaching social studies, and I quote, "allows us to cross boundaries and learn more about each other and our world." Uh, Michelle was not able to be with us tonight, but wanted to make mention that she's been with the district since 2008. This award is very meaningful to her because she was nominated by Scott Knowett and Jen Hansen, two colleagues that teach social studies in our school district. They are teachers that she's looked up to for a long time. It is also meaningful because I am representing the first grade team of teachers and the lessons that we've designed together at McKinley. She's honored to represent the school district and town that she grew up in. She feels blessed to work with such talented and amazing teachers. And I wanted to lift up our congratulations to Michelle on being named for this honor, but also that she just really resonates our mission around inspiring excellence for every learner, every day.
Mr. Elstad, thank you. I'm sorry that, uh, ours are circumstances that don't allow her to be here with us tonight, but nice to have that, uh, nonetheless. Uh, we're gonna move on. Item five tonight, which is public forum. I'm once again gonna turn things over to Mr. Elstad. He can explain the format by which we made public forum available.
So as part of the, uh, school board direction from statute, um, because again, I've got a couple of comments I'll make later about, uh, school board meetings during the pandemic time. Uh, just on this very item, we have made available to the public, uh, by communicating, communicating through our regular newspaper and other means, that public forum will now be conducted via email. So, um, we are, we sent an email or sent, uh, that notification out. Uh, the email is schoolboard@asd761.org. Uh, that was sent out, uh, last Thursday. And we did not receive any comments or public forum, uh, in regard to this meeting. But in the event that our, uh, we continue moving forward in this direction, we'll continue to communicate so that people can at least, um, provide their forum. I will read on behalf of the constituent that has submitted the forum, but again, at this time, we've received no public forum in regard to the March 30th, 2020 school board meeting.
Mr. Elstad, thanks for that description and we would continue to invite, uh, comments to be made for public forum, again, via the email resource that Sarah would monitor for us. We're gonna move on to item six, which is general information. I'll take these one by one and, uh, as we had talked about preceding the meeting, if there's a a comment that you would like to make, in fact, it appears as though it'll be easy enough if you would just unmute yourself and, uh, raise any questions that you might have, we'll go slowly enough. But as it relates to item A, which would be the enrollment report, does anybody have any questions or comments relative to the enrollment report? Okay, seeing none. Um, item B, which is the school board policy revisions. Uh, this isn't anything that we talked about preceding the meeting, but, uh, this time around, the policy revisions, um, were rather voluminous compared to, you know, just a little striking of a line here and there. And so, any of you that are on policy, if there's anything you would like to add or comment on relative to the fairly significant changes that we see in a couple of the policies, I'd welcome that.
I can just comment briefly. Actually, I think the one, um, policy might look more voluminous than it really is. I think 541 is the one, um, where we actually had an existing policy and we just had to do, I, I think it was probably Chris, I'm not sure who did the heavy lifting, but, um, it, it's worse than it, than it really is. It's not as, there aren't as many changes there as it appears.
Very good. Chris, anything that you want to comment relative to that?
No, Laurie was, is right. Uh, we did have a current policy and we just, um, updated most of it with, uh, we had it in content, but I think we just switched things around based on MSBA policy.
Very good, thank you. Anybody, any other comments or questions relative to, uh, the policy revisions? Very good. And then we'll go onto the item C, which is the Otana City, um, the council public hearing and it has to do with the TIF and the Bosch out here on Bridge Street. Any questions relative to that? Okay, hearing none. We're gonna move on. Item seven tonight, not requiring any action by us as the board. Uh, board forum, I'm gonna go around the horn on my screen. Eric, I'll start with you. Any comment relative to, uh, board forum?
Nothing today.
Okay, thanks Eric. How about you Christina?
Oh, nothing today.
Okay. Jolene, how about you?
Um, I'm exhausted from my first day of being a stand-in facilitator. But what I can say is I am over the moon impressed with staff and what they did and how they're connecting with kids and the things that they're laying out. For my third, fifth and seventh grader, it is very, very obvious, they love these children, they miss them, and they're working really, really hard to make sure that the students feel heard, seen and loved. It was just fantastic.
Great comments, thanks Jolene. Tim, how about you? Any comments?
You have to unmute yourself, Tim.
The spacebar is supposed to do that, but it wasn't. I was just saying that school started here and, um, glad to see that, uh, that the people are making it happen. It's quite a feat to switch to online.
Thanks, Tim. How about you Laurie? Anything for, uh, uh, board forum tonight?
Yeah, I would just echo those comments. I've talked with teachers at various levels and inquiring how they're surrounding it and, and what I hear consistently, which is really, I think, a testament to our leadership at the district level is, a phrase I've often used lately, um, remaining flexible and cheerful at all times. And folks really are doing that, so. It's good.
It's good to hear, thank you. And Nikki, how about you? Anything for board forum?
Um, the only thing, um, we've already kind of touched on the policy committee, um, but we, um, did table one policy that we were going to review, um, waiting for the legislation, um, session to end, so there may be more changes coming. Um, and then I also would like to echo what everyone else has been saying. It's wonderful to see, um, how engaged the teachers are with all the students. I saw on Facebook today, some teachers having first day back school pictures with welcome back signs and that was just so fun to see.
Nice to hear. Nikki, thank you very much. I have nothing to add. Uh, you folks summed it up very, very well. Item B tonight is the administrative report. I'll turn things over to Mr. Elstad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this is going to be a rather lengthy administrative support. Uh, because I'm gonna bring us back to approximately 14 days, actually a little longer than that. Uh, March 13th, um, Friday, March 13th, we were informed at that time by Governor Walz that, uh, we were not to have any large gatherings. And so we were looking at restructuring concerts, we were looking at restructuring some of our activities. We came back and started communicating with our parents and, and, and community. Sunday, March 15th, two days later, uh, Governor Walz announced the school closure, uh, up until today. And that we were to start preparing for distance learning. And the only thing that I can liken it to is, um, trying to build an airplane while we're flying in the air. And, um, it's been quite a journey, but I feel so blessed to work with a team that just came together and made it happen. Uh, there's a lot of moving parts with this. And, uh, it's not as simple as distance learning because if you remember, Governor Walz also ordered us to provide meals for our students and rightly so. We want our students to be fed. Uh, we provide, we're providing emergency childcare. And within the distance learning, there are some nuances because we have, uh, support staff that are supporting our childcare, that are providing distance learning on behalf of our teachers, as well as certainly our special education department that's providing, uh, very delicate balance of making sure that we're meeting IP needs, but also addressing core academic needs for our students as well. And certainly not, not the least or last, is the impressive sanitation of our custodial department, uh, keeping our buildings clean and safe. Uh, so again, this has been, uh, a team effort. And so what I'd like to do tonight is really to call upon the various directors of our cabinet that have taken over aspects of this and um, one of the things I recognized early on as a leader in my career is that when you have great people around you, there are some times that you just get out of their way. And so at this point, um, I'm going to get out of their way and I'll introduce each of the areas so that the right person can speak, but I'd really like at this time to call upon Michelle Crowell, our Director of Teaching and Learning, to talk about the expansive, uh, distance learning program that she's overtaken. Go ahead, Michelle.
Let's see. Good, good evening everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and share a screen here. Um, let's see, for some reason, let's see, let me get it to the right spot. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and share a screen. Obviously, like Jeff said, it was a huge undertaking for us to begin this process. But I have to tell you, um, we have an amazing group of educators here in the Otana Public Schools. I couldn't be more proud of the work that has been done. Um, like Mr. Elstad said, you know, that we can't, we had to come together on that Sunday and really start to develop a plan. And so the teaching and learning team, the technology innovation team, and of course, our cabinet and administration worked extremely hard to try to figure out, first of all, what is distance learning? And distance learning, as defined by the state, is, um, providing students with access to appropriate educational materials and ensuring they receive daily interactions with their licensed teacher. And so, it, and it's not limited to face-to-face, it's not intended to limit the face-to-face interactions due to loss of a cancellation of school. So, with that, we started to create a plan and, um, between those groups of people, we put together a 22-page plan, trying to identify every single aspect of what distance learning is and could be. And then based on that plan, then we started to identify, you know, what were the learning tools and skills we needed to identify for, for staff and how could this look? And so I'm thankful that the team really worked hard and, and there was a lot of critical conversations, but what we landed on is, um, we would, we would go ahead and create a plan where we're utilizing Google Classroom and Schoology as our online platforms. And then, um, to be able to identify how we could streamline that for parents. We were really putting students at the forefront of everything we were talking about. So figuring out how could this work for students and families, recognizing that this is new to them as well as us and, and that we can't ask for too much. So, as we moved into this, we realized that we would identify K5 students would all have one Google Classroom for their classroom teacher. We developed a system where, um, everybody that works with that, those particular students would collaborate. So we have, let's say we have a Mrs. Johnson, that's a second grade teacher. We would have our, any, our EL teacher, our intervention teacher, our FIAD teacher, our music teacher, an art teacher, and a spe, our special ed teacher, all collaborating within that classroom to help deliver the content necessary. And then we identified how at the elementary level, we would be consistent across all of our grade levels. So it shouldn't matter what school you're at, you're still gonna get the same distance learning education. And so, that collaboration happened. So when we came together on Wednesday of that week after Governor Walz had announced it, Wednesday and Thursday were our times where our teaching and learning team really worked closely with, um, our teaching staff to really identify what, what is it that we need to learn fast? Google Classroom is one of those things, as well as Screencastify and many other different online aspects. And so, online was one tool and we worked really consistently. We created a shared database. And then what we're doing with that is we're then using that to also create, um, some tools that we can do paper pencil, because we recognize that all, not all of our students are going to have internet access. Um, at the 6-8 level, they, student, teachers developed a Google Classroom as well. They identified what days certain courses would be posting so that a student didn't have 12 courses that, because we're on an AB schedule, that they didn't have 12 courses at the same time. So, they developed a schedule throughout the five days of a week and which courses would post in what days. Um, we developed a schedule for teachers as well. And then our 912 students, both that are at OHS and at the ALC are running their regular schedule via either Schoology or Google Classroom. And so, we had to first come up with the systems so that we could go ahead and create a plan. And so with those systems, we also knew how important technology was and our, and Mike Halverson is, in his team, um, the tech technology and innovation team did an outstanding job. They started a plan for this about a week before, um, the first inkling that we could be doing this, because we just haven't had a feeling this could be coming up. So, they pulled every device from every school in the district and pulled them to the high school and the middle school. They categorized them. They identified a plan. So what we ended up doing on that Monday was we, um, they went to, they started at the high school and they handed a device to every single student that said that they needed a device. And then they went to the middle school that afternoon and were able to give every student that indicated they needed a device, a device. And then were able to then identify that at the elementary level, every family that didn't have a device, got a device. And so, I'm pretty thrilled to have been able to provide devices. The, the next barrier obviously is internet. And so we've identified all the families that don't have internet. We're prioritizing those families for, we only have about 20, um, internet hotspots, so we're prioritizing those students. So, there's the online component. And then there, in addition to that, there is also some paper pencil versions of some of the work that we're doing. The elementary, they created choice boards, so there's some choice for families, um, that they can do. And then after that, then we put together, um, a distance learning website. The site I'm showing you right now is actually our distance learning website for teachers. Um, and so we put this together, we've got all of the information from our 22-page plan that pertains to teachers within this site, so it's all collapsible. Um, so as you go through, you can see what each of the levels is doing, um, as well as their schedules. And it goes through all of these components. So, and then in addition to that, we also went ahead and, um, shared, we did a shared teacher resource and this was really helped guide us through the planning stages. And so, within each of these categories, um, we have particular, like if I go to a first, a second grade, for instance, I'm gonna have, as a teacher, I'm gonna see all the links of all the work that was done. And they really shared responsibility in doing this. And so, um, they have done outstanding job. And then, um, the other thing that we did in addition was to create a, a, a website for families. And so, that's what I have up right now. And so here again, same thing. That's what I have up right now. And so here again, same thing, we have links to lots of different resources. And then we have links to all of the information that pertains to families. This is general information and then we get into each of the specific levels and what that looks like for each of the levels. So trying to provide as much information as we can for families. Resources for families. In addition, our multi bilingual success coaches, which we have a link there as well, have been. Extremely important, critical employees for us as we've communicated all of this information. And as you know, today was our first day. And really wanted, what we wanted staff to do was to, to be able to. Build back those relationships. We're building relationships in a different way, but relationships are number one. And our, our teachers have missed our students tremendously. And so I think there was a lot of excitement with being able to connect. And so I think that it's been, it's been great to serve people to staff to be able to connect with their students. And then we really want to be able to take the time to. Take it slow to go fast. And so really not wanting to overwhelm families. And to really be very planful and mindful. Of some of even the challenges that our families are going through at this time. So. Like I said, I, I couldn't be more proud of this staff and the work that they've done. Hard work tirelessly working to put a plan together and then to execute it. It is definitely different teaching online. Than it is face to face. We all love to have our kids in the classroom with us. But for now, this is, this is going to be our mode. And if, if a, if a student doesn't have internet access, like I said, we have paper pencil things. But our teachers are also contacting those families via phone. To be able to have conversations, to find out how it's going. I feel like by Tuesday, Wednesday, we're really going to have a good gauge of so where we're at. Our technology and innovation teams, they have a hotline. They're extremely busy today. Unbeknownst to us, unfortunately, like Schoology had a national problem. As far as their, as far as launching Schoology today. So that was maybe a glitch that we had, but. The technology innovation team were answering calls and getting back to families as quick as they could. But their call volume was extremely high as we tried to support families. So with that, I, are there any questions about? The distance learning plan and the work that's been done?
Michelle?
Yep.
So I'm not, I can just see your screen. I'm, so I wasn't sure if you could see. Quick questions. How many students, if you know, do not have a hotspot that? Need one or would be nice to have one? Do you have any idea?
Yeah, so we collected that, that information. That first week before we were done with school. And so I would say that we average at our elementary between twenty-nine students at one school. Up to about fifty, fifty-five students at another school. Some of them are families. So I'd have to look, we're gauging that, we're figuring that out. I know we have, we have some at the middle school and the high school. And so like I said, we're prioritizing the high school seniors first. And those hotspots will go out to those students. We did order some more, but they won't be here until May. So. We did our best. It's, it, you know, it's, I think that when we say internet and device, we're, we want to be able to have, not a phone. Most families have phones and so they're able to have, they can see like our emails and things like that via their phone, but to do online learning. I'll have a better gauge soon, but it's probably upwards as about a hundred and fifty to two hundred students.
Yep. Thank you. And then just curious, is the distance learning plan for families, is that material then? On our district website? So if we wanted to, we could browse that or is that only available to parents?
Yep, no, it is on our, if you go to our district website and you, on the very front page of the district website. You're able to see distance learning as one of the four choices. That are there, you just click that and then that gets you right into that parent site. The staff site is also linked in the staff dropdown, but that is only accessible to our staff because it's an internal document. But parents, yes, everything is there for parents.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Any other questions for Michelle?
I have one question. So I know just from teaching through community ed, that certain IDs have limited capabilities. Did you have to change or did the IT people have to make lots of changes to their rights so that they had access to? More things that maybe they wouldn't have previously now due to this distance learning?
I don't, are you talking about the teachers having access or the students having access?
The students having access.
You know what? I'm not positive about that answer. I don't think so. We still have the same security that we have. As far as like K five, K six students, like they can't receive. Email from somebody outside of the Otana Public Schools. We still have some of the same security, we have security with our, within our devices. But I, not that I know of that we had to do. I'm sure we had to do some configuring of our computers and things like that. So I guess I'm not sure if I have that answered correctly.
No, that's fine. Again, just thank you for all your hard work.
Well, it was a team effort. Like I said, I can't be more proud of the team. We have a, an amazing group of educators and. You know, we, they worked hard to put this together and our goal is to support. Our teachers, our students and our families with whatever we need to support because. We understand that this is a big undertaking for everybody. And you know, we've said how important it is that we all have to embrace for one another. We can't do it all at once and we're going to, it's a learning endeavor. I do believe though, through great challenges come great opportunities. And I think that this is one of those. Great opportunities for us to grow and learn and be more innovative and see education in a different light. So if there's a silver lining, I believe that innovation and technology use is definitely there. It was a fast track. To learning how to use technology in the manner that we're going to, we're using it right now with students today. So highly impressed with our staff.
Thanks, Michelle. Any other questions from board for Michelle? I'll turn it back over to Mr. Elstead.
Thank you, Mark. And what I'd like to do now is. I know that Michelle is going to kind of take her sharing off of the screen so Amanda can access that. One of the other orders from Governor Walz was for us to. Set up and implement a meal distribution. Opportunity for our students so that they receive free meals. And so at this time, I will turn that over to Amanda Hammond, our Director of Finance and Operations.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So as Mr. Elstead mentioned, obviously, it's very important during this time of our building closures that we are feeding. All of the children in our community to make sure that everyone is getting meals that need meals. So here, I'm sharing my screen here. Here is a flyer that went out to families last week as to our plans for. How we're doing meal service during the school closure. So as you can see here, we are providing meals for all children. In the community ages of one through eighteen years old. And we have several different locations. We have about, we have fourteen different locations throughout the community that we're providing meals for. We have three drive up locations, Wilson, McKinley and Otana. Those will run Monday through Friday, every day of the week, eleven to noon. And then we also have eleven bus location sites and are running those bus location sites. Two days a week, so running them on Mondays and Thursdays, eleven to noon. Mondays, children will receive three days of meals. So they'll receive meals for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And then Thursday, they'll get Thursday and Friday's meals. At those specific locations. If families aren't able to make those locations, they can always use the drive up locations. All throughout the week. And we're also working with social workers. If there's families that don't, that can't access the food locations that we currently have. We do have some delivery options. So we are working with social workers on that as we move forward. Today we served, our daily count was one thousand two hundred and ninety-eight meals. So we served a significant amount. And obviously, as I said, we were serving three meals at some of those sites for those days and we're, we're recording daily totals for MDE. But in all, when you look at the three days of meals that we served today, it'll be two thousand eight hundred and sixty-two meals that actually went out today. So we'll count those counts, obviously, each day as we go. So for the daily count today, it was one thousand two hundred and ninety-eight, but in total, we sent out two thousand eight hundred and sixty-two meals. So that's a, a significant amount. So those numbers will obviously get calculated in over the next three days. So any questions on our plan for meal pickup?
Amanda, this is Jeff again. Could you just comment a bit about our partnership with?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I should, I was going to mention that. Thank you very much. Yes. We've been, oh, a ton of bus company has been extremely helpful throughout this process. They've been, they've worked with us to make sure that. They're able to get drivers and buses to locations where we need them. They've been very flexible with helping us get to wherever we need to. And they've been a great partner throughout this whole thing.
Any other board questions for Amanda? Hearing none. Mr. Elstead, one more time.
Thank you. We'll keep rolling down kind of the list from Governor Walz's order. Obviously, one of the important parts, and I think very thoughtful from Governor Walz, was to. Get implementing a childcare program that ensures childcare for. Our emergency and first responder personnel, as well as some other community members that are deemed essential to our community. And so I'm going to turn it over to Deb McDermott Johnson, our Director of Community Education, who's been working diligently. To set this program up so that there's multiple pieces and moving parts within that. But again, I'll turn it over to Deb and she can inform the board as to how that's going.
Well, thanks and welcome, everyone. And we've had a really grand experience from the start. We started providing service on March eighteenth. So we had three days before the district went on spring break and we did serve on average eighteen to twenty children each of those days. During spring break, we also ran a full program, opening at six thirty, closing at five thirty, and we served on average of ten to twelve children. On each of the five days of that week. Our school age care team has been doing an amazing job pulling this all together. And what's significant is they're working with children, many of which they have not had previous experience with. Because our traditional school age care program has been suspended. And so we are focusing all of our energies. On our emergency personnel. And what they call the tier two, which is an additional group of folks who are considered to be essential in the community. So with all of that, we had eight days under our belt when we rolled into work this morning, where we. Added the very important distance learning component to the day. And I can tell you that it went. From my perspective, about as flawlessly as we could expect, given the circumstances. We did serve fifteen children today. They had a total of four hours of instructional time. They had two hours in the morning and two hours in the afternoon. We added to our repertoire of skills, our K twelve EAs, paras. We had behavioral interventionists with us today. To be honest, we sort of outnumbered the kids about one to five. So it was. No one left without lack of attention today. And if there could have been hugs given, there would have been a whole lot of those being handed out. Because we certainly had a welcoming site for our kids. I can tell you that all fifteen of our kids were able to successfully use their personal devices. All of which were issued by the district in, in today's circumstances. And they were successfully accessed their lessons and completed everything that they opened and worked on. A few of the older students had some additional things they could do tonight or we're going to continue to work on when they left the site today. But had a really strong day from that perspective. All of the staff today was given an orientation to the site. Their teaching and learning. Success coaches stepped in and. Helped provide an hour of orientation on, on the, the whys and the hows of supporting kids in a distance learning environment. Amy Jo Helveck stepped in and provided our health and safety. Instructions so that everyone knew what our cleaning and disinfecting protocols were going to be for everyone that serves at the site. And then Betsy Wilker and Sean Hughes, who have been doing the bulk of the work on the site, really managing the day to day logistics. And myself, we also rotated into the orientation classrooms where we had everyone socially distant. We had four rooms that we divided the staff into in order to accommodate all of the. Needs that we had for social distancing. But we helped answer the logistics and. And let staff know where they could go to get their needs met as they're trying to. Support the kids in their resource projects. So it, overall, I have to tell you that it was. Truly a remarkable day. Our, our last thing, as we ended the day, Betsy alerted me that we have five additional phone calls that came in this afternoon. We're hoping to enroll in the site. And so Betsy will be working with those families and we'll be onboarding children on a daily basis and until needs are met. Questions for us?
Any board members? Question for Deb? Deb, thank you. Hearing none. I'll turn things back over to Mr. Elstead.
Okay, one of the things that, again, as part of Governor Walz's order was. That we were to keep all of our employees working. And that becomes a little bit more difficult when students aren't necessarily attending schools, but. Chris Pika and the direct, who's our Director of Human Resources, has worked with our team to really identify a plan. So that we can keep our employees moving forward and learning. And so I'm going to turn it over to Chris and she can talk a little bit about how our support staff is contributing to our, our, our current plan.
Yes, good evening, everyone. It was a, again, as everyone has said, it was a team effort. As a cabinet, we brainstorm. On what types of jobs we could have. Majority of would be our EAs and paras do. We had about a hundred and sixty to try to place. You know, through childcare or helping prep or deliver meals. And we came up with those jobs, those would be the majority of the positions, along with reading audio books. Putting curriculum packets and phonics packets together. And then running the libraries. On the buses. So, and vans. So I got numbers from Deb, Michelle's group. And then try to, and then try to put a schedule together. Where a lot of it is rotating because with a hundred and sixty people, oh, and Danielle, Danielle took. About sixty of the paras, which was very helpful to help with the distance learning. So actually, I worked with about a hundred to try to schedule on a rotating basis because a lot of these positions were. Not full day positions. They were maybe Monday, Thursday, summer Friday, summer just Wednesday. So I became a master scheduler and I will be working for McDonald's and when I retire and scheduling. But it was, it was changed every day. Either new jobs came about and where we needed people. Or we do have some staff that either have. A medical, you know, they're medically vulnerable, so they can't work with. Students or, you know, they would, they, we, they need to work remotely, which we don't have very many positions to work remotely. So trying to accommodate that or they have spouses or siblings that ha- that are medically vulnerable. So then working through, there's a new family's first leave process. So working through that process with the employees. And then just, just trying to be really, really creative to try to, to try to get as many people working as possible. We do have about ten that refuse to work. So they'll just be placed on an unpaid leave until we come back from distance learning. And then, and then to try to, Deb's did a wonderful job because we do have more healthcare workers available. On running a rotating schedule within a rotating schedule. So it's been, she's been very creative with that. And then, you know, making sure we communicate to the staff. Taking care of the absences. It's just a lot of communication.
Any questions for Chris? Very impressive. Wow. Chris, thank you very much. Let's keep moving. Uh, Chris, thank you very much. Let's keep moving along.
Okay, I'm actually going to, uh, obviously, um, some of our students have very special needs um, that they have, and. Uh, Danielle Tyce, our Director of Special Services, has been working with her team. As well as our special educators in the district to uh, identify how we might best meet the needs of our students during distance learning, which. Can be a real challenge. And so at this time, I just want to ask Danielle to give a brief overview as to. How we're providing some of that more specialized instruction for our students.
Good evening. So for um, children who are receiving services, since all of that is individualized. We're really focusing on connecting those case managers to those families. We want to make sure that parents know, how is my child's special needs going to be met during distance learning, and what is that going to look like? So uh, obviously, for every child, it's, it's different, but we're making sure that people understand that we want to stay connected. We want to make sure that kids that find school to be more challenging for lots of different reasons are still connected with those case managers. So we're thinking outside the box, and we're getting really creative, and we appreciate the ideas that parents have. They know their children best. And we're going to work really hard to stay connected through this, and we'll figure it out. We're also talking through the legalities. There's lots of legalities in special education. And we're finding ways that we can try to streamline that for families and our special ed teachers and Paris. So I'm really proud of the work that the team is doing. They're working very hard to. Meet the individual needs in a very unique situation. Where we can't have the same proximity that we would have for certain disability areas that it would require. So in some cases, we are having to put some services on hold during distance learning, but we're trying to think outside the box in every way we can. So we're doing individual things in special ed. Questions for me?
Danielle, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Elstad.
Well, I'm not going to leave Mr. Olson out, no. He, uh, our custodial and maintenance team, um, obviously have an entirely different. Things that they're having to do now to make sure that we're keeping things sanitized every day and, and uh. Bob has done a great job about leading that team, and I'm going to just have Bob comment a little bit about kind of some of our sanitary procedures with uh. The district and how our custodial maintenance team is working. Go ahead, Bob.
Thanks, Jeff. What a couple of weeks we've had, huh? And I agree with everybody that has talked about it. It has been a team effort, and it is, it's been unbelievable to see. Um, a lot of the stuff that our team is doing is a lot of the same things we do normally. During flu seasons, we do, when, when kids leave for FIAID after music, we get in there and we sanitize. Um, so a lot of the stuff that we have been doing for years, we were already doing that, which made me feel real good because. Our staff that we have is trained, and they were, they're ready, they were ready for this pandemic as much as we could be ready. So what do we do when we don't have kids in the building? Well, we do everything, we do things as fast as we can. So really, what we've done is we started doing some of our deep cleaning. Um, summer cleaning. So when we don't have anybody in the building, we can get to things that we normally don't get to. Um, we have gym floors right now that normally, that normally we have to do in Ju, June and July. We had uh, the middle school, two gyms are done. We have Lincoln's uh, gym is done, the gym floor. Uh, Washington's gym floor is done. We have Terrazzo in the hallways that have been taken care of now. So when the kids come back, they're going to be nice and bright. Um, so what we're doing is we're taking advantage of not having people in the buildings to get some of our deep cleaning done. And then we still have to worry about making sure that where Deb is sitting every single day out at um, New McKinley. We have to make sure that that's sanitized as well, uh, during the day and, and ready for the next day a, as well. Um, one thing that we didn't really think about was playgrounds and with the coronavirus and it lasting, so. We, we sanitize the playground in the morning, kids go out and play, we sanitize it when they're not out there around the lunchtime. And I hoping to, hoping to get that stuff, and if there's anything on there, it'll, it'll kill it, but we can't guarantee what happens, you know, after hours, but. Uh, we're doing the best that we can do. Our grounds crew is, is waiting for the, waiting for the summer to start, so then they can get, get out there and start some mowing. I will have to say, the one thing that makes me the most proud of our team is that whenever any of the other departments needed something. I never heard anybody in our department complain about, well, I have to go do this now. They are stepping forward like I've never seen people step forward um, in, in times of crisis. So it is, it's amazing to see that. I got an email today I shared with Mr. Elstad earlier, um, from one of our vendors, and he said that he. Out of all the districts that he works with, he's most impressed with what he's seen with the Oatana Public Schools and our uh, maintenance department. From the guys that work in this stuff, they were already um, ready for this. They, we have enough equipment. We don't have to worry about stuff not coming in and not being ready. We have a couple people that are our managers and one of our leads. That has stepped up and made sure that we were ready to go when this thing happened. And there's a lot of other school districts that don't have things right now because they waited so long. So I gotta give our team props on, they were ready, they stepped forward, and they're making sure that our schools. Are clean and ready for all of these other departments to continue to do the jobs and for kids to continue to come to school, so. That's about it. That's all we've been doing. Any questions or anything?
If you're cleaning um, uh, gym floors now, y- you'll still have to do it again this summer, right?
No, no, we should be, we should be pretty good. We're not anticipating a lot of use. Um, usage, because if we get kids back in May, we're basically going to have them in there for just, just a month. And then, and actually, it's a lot better right now because of the humidity levels we don't have to worry about. So we should be good, and they're gonna, they're gonna look brand new in the next school year when they come back.
Thanks, Bob. Any other questions for Bob?
Thank you.
Uh, once again, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Elstad for any closing comments in this area.
Thank you, and thanks for entertaining this rather lengthy administrative report, but I wanted to make sure that our board and, and community was informed of all of the move. Various moving parts within this. I just have a few other things that I wanted to make comment on. Obviously, Governor Walz has given us a lot of great direction, and, and also the Minnesota Department of Education continues to provide daily guidance for us. Um, as to how we move through this, knowing that we're all kind of in this together and that um. I think one of the first comments that was made was, would the person that has been through a pandemic before speak about how to operate public schools during this time? And it was a hearty chuckle, and I think we all neared it at the time from the Commissioner, but anyway, uh, Commissioner Mary Catherine Ricker is providing, providing guidance for us. Couple other things the board should be aware of. Um, your Minnesota legislature is working hard for you. Um, they're talking about how do we respond to this? How do we provide the appropriate finances so that we can make districts whole as a result of the pandemic? And also looking at some other pieces of legislation that might be beneficial to give us some financial stability moving forward. Uh, one other piece of news that we heard late last week is that Minnesota has filed for the waiver. Uh, that was given by the United States Department of Education, so our students will not be taking the M C A test this spring. Uh, all of those tests have been waived, and so um, we will be using our district-wide and different assessments that. Help personalize learning for students as we move forward, but we will not be doing M C A testing uh, and during the rate, remainder of the year. Uh, our schedule. So as per the Governor's Order about distance learning that came last Wednesday. Uh, distance learning commenced today, March thirtieth, and we are to do distance learning as we typically would on a regular school day. Up through, I think it's uh, uh, Thursday, April thirtieth. Um, at that time, uh, that would be the last day of distance learning. Um, right now, the governor has stated that Friday, May first and Monday, May fourth would be what we call transition days. And then we would expect our students to return on Tuesday, May fifth. Now, that is all subject to change, uh, but that is the plan right now, and as Governor Walz has been very planful about. How he's scheduled things, and so um, I'm sure we'll hear more from him as we move throughout the following, the, the upcoming weeks. But uh, that would be our plan, and I think we're all crossing our fingers here to get our students back. So by, by May fifth, because we want to see them again. So, and the last thing is, um, just, I've been watching a little bit of the commentary, and I see that people are quoting Mr. Rogers. About looking to the helpers. So we are all called to be helpers. And I couldn't be more proud of our staff in the many ways that they have stepped up to be the helpers. Oatana should be very proud of their school district. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Elstad, thank you. This is as good an opportunity as any. Uh, normally, in each of these meetings, we would take just a couple of minutes and have uh, members or representatives from each of the standing committees. Give us a quick update. We did uh, touch on the, the policy revisions that were being introduced as a first reading tonight. And that I'd use this as an opportunity. Anybody on policy, have you, I, I would be surprised if you've met since we, uh, since we last had a board meeting, but if there's anything. Policy folks would like to bring up or lift up uh, at this time, this would be a good opportunity. Okay, hearing none. How about finance? I know that um, Amanda has probably had much bigger fish to fry over the course of the last two weeks, but anything um, finance folks would like to add?
Mark, we haven't met since our last meeting, so there's nothing to report.
Very good. And um, Jolene, I'll call on you. Uh, facilities met uh, just prior to tonight's meeting. So Jolene, could you give us a quick update for facilities?
Yep, um, it talked about the project at the O E C, and it came in significantly over budget, and so we're going to pull back on that and hang tight and rebid it again. Next year to see if we can get some more bidders, number one, and to have numbers come down significantly to be closer in line with our budget. The task force on the high school um, is supposed to meet this week. They missed a meeting, so they're going to have to reschedule some things. Um, to get that sixth or seventh meeting. They've got two left, is what they had said. Um. Working hard to kind of finalize some ideas and visions and cohesion for. Where they want some of their spacing, what common space looks like, what collective space looks like. Um, with the hope that within the next couple of weeks, they can bring back like three D. Areas to put together for the task force, because not everybody can read a set of blueprints, and so to make sure that. People can visually see where some of these blocks can fit together to make sure they want it where they think they want it. So.
Good. Jolene, thank you very much. Uh, we. Look at, just to see if anybody has a comment. We will continue to move on. Uh, on our agenda tonight, we're at item eight, which will be the consent agenda, and we'll start, I'm going to do this. We're going to uh, break up the consent agenda into um, two different votes, and the first one will be for items A and B. So I'll do this. I will make the motion that we approve the minutes from February twenty-four, twenty-twenty, and the March nine, twenty-twenty meeting, as well as the disbursement report. I'll look for a second.
Second.
Second, but maybe.
Actually, uh, Jolene got that as the second. We will open this up for discussion. Any questions? Or, or comments relative to items A and B? Okay, hearing none. Eric, would you take care of the roll call vote for us, please?
Nikki?
I.
Tim?
Hi.
Jolene?
Hi.
Mark?
I.
Christina?
I.
Lori?
I.
I myself, so I, seven oh vote.
Motion carries. Thanks, Eric. Um, the reason that we're splitting out uh, the personnel report from this item C is because Tim. Has a family member, his son Jacob is showing up in your personnel report tonight, so. Once again, I will make the motion that we uh, approve the changes in the personnel report as listed. I'll ask for a second.
Second.
Eric has made the second. We'll, once again, open up the floor for discussion. Uh, hearing none. Uh, it's been moved and seconded. Eric, one more time, a roll call vote, please.
Yep. Nikki?
I.
Tim?
I am staying.
Jolene?
I.
Mark?
I.
Christina?
I.
Lori?
I.
And I myself, so I, six oh vote.
Motion carries. Eric, thank you very much. We're going to move on to item nine tonight, board action requested, and these will all be roll call votes once again. Um, I'm going to ask Mr. Elstad to do a little introduction for each of these. Item A would be the school board meetings during pandemic.
Yes, we received guidance from the Minnesota School Boards Association in regard to our response to pandemic. And I just want to give you a brief background as to um, in light of Governor Wal's executive order. Uh, issued on Wednesday, March twenty-fifth, a couple of statutes come into place. One of them is Minnesota statute thirteen D point zero two one. Which permits school boards to hold a meeting by conference call or other electronic means. Under that statute, the school board chair, the school district's chief legal counsel or the superintendent. May determine that an in-person meeting or a meeting conducted under section thirteen D point zero two is not practical or prudent. Because of a health pandemic or an emergency declared under chapter twelve. I would also indicate that members of the public um, can um, present at the regular meeting. Uh, location can hear the body of all discussion and the testimony, as you've indicated, and all of the roll call votes that are taken. Um, and then uh, at least one board member of which Mr. Sebring is here this evening. The school district's legal counsel or the superintendent are physically present, and I am also present. Uh, at today, today's meeting at the district office. Um, others may not be able to attend because it is unfeasible due to the health pandemic or emergency declaration. And lastly, again, as point of procedure, that all votes are conducted by roll call so that each school board members vote on each issue. And can be identified and recorded. That is the background uh, to how we will respond as a school board by statute. Uh, during the pandemic time, and so I would ask if there are any questions before there's a call to question.
Jeff, I'll pose this question to you. So we will continue on with this format until we hear from the governor that the pandemic has been. Uh, or the, the alert to this has been lifted, and we can go back to a, a more normal format.
That's correct. Uh, the governor uh, would have to take an issue and order that would release the emergent peacetime emergency declaration. That will then allow us to go back to meeting as we typically would in person.
Board members, any questions or comments relative to those? Okay, hearing none. I will introduce. I'll introduce the motion that due to the declared health ca, health pandemic and the declared state of emergency. And pursuant to Minnesota statute thirteen D dot zero two one, until further notice, all school board meetings will be held by teleconference. Or other electronic means. I'll ask for a second.
Second.
Eric has seconded this. Once again, Eric, this would be a roll call vote.
Correct. Nikki?
I.
Tim?
I.
Jolene?
I.
I.
Christina?
I.
Lori?
I.
I myself, so I, seven oh vote.
Motion carries. Eric, thank you very much. Item B tonight would be the A L C cooperative. Once again, I'll turn it over to Mr. Elstad.
This is a piece of statute that actually has been on the record for uh, quite some time, but the Department of Education recently sort of unearthed. The uh, uh, policy indicating that we were entering into uh, an area learning center cooperative. The intent of A L Cs has always been uh, with some of the larger communities in Minnesota. That they would open up their doors for an alternative education experience to students that live outside of our district. But can be part of a cooperative. Um, about two weeks ago, just before we kind of went into this pandemic mode. Uh, Michelle Crowell, our Director of Teaching Learning, and Jim Kiefer, A L C principal, um, met with the Medford School Board. And within that, we have now designated Medford as the school that is part of our area learning center cooperative. A couple of things, and what that means is, is that the Medford students that choose to enroll in our A L C. Would be treated as if they were resident students. Uh, and so students that are outside of Medford Public Schools or Oatana Public Schools would be considered open enrolled. And at this time, I saw, see that Michelle has come back on. Michelle, is there anything else you'd like to add in regard to our cooperative agreement with the Medford Public Schools?
Um, I think you, you summed it up well. I think they were, they were happy to enter into an agreement with us. Um, and they realized the benefits. It doesn't mean that we, we will continue to, to um, allow students from other districts to come to. Our A L C. It just means that Medford students would be considered in districts if we're ever, we're at capacity. And um, we would only be accepting students from both Oatana and Medford because they would get priority to come. And we would only be accepting students from both Oatana and Medford, because they would get priority to come to our ALC. But it went very well, and they entered into a motion to enter with the interest of entering into a cooperative agreement with the Oatana Public Schools.
Board members, this is a topic that we addressed in our work session at our last meeting, and, and I think we had a, a good background from Mr. Elstad and. And Michelle on this as well. Any other questions before we proceed? Hearing none. I will make the motion that the board approve the formation of an ALC cooperative with Medford Public Schools, I'll ask for a second.
Second.
Lori, Lori, you showed up on my screen as the person that had caught the, the audio, so Lori had the second, Eric, one more time, we'll do a. Roll call vote.
Nikki?
I.
Tim?
I.
Jolene?
I.
Mark?
I.
Christina?
I.
Lori?
I.
And I myself, an I, seven oh vote.
Motion carries. Eric, thank you. Item C tonight would be the roof improvement project, this is going to be at the Washington School, Bob, I believe you're still with us. And we'll ask you to speak to that issue for us.
Sounds good, thank you. We went all for bid and we will be. I don't remember who got it, it's a new name, I don't have it here in front of me, do you guys have it in front of you? All right, you got it there. We had probably, we had four bidders on it. And the name of the company right in front of you is the one that got the bid, and we were very happy with the bids because it came in a lot lower than we were anticipating, so. We had some good news on bid day.
That bid is from the Garland Roof Company, Bob?
No, Garland Roof is the, kind of the roof that we put on it. I know the guy, I know the guy that owns it, his name's Ball, but he moved to a different company and started his own.
Is it Jackson and Associates, Bob?
That is it, yes, thank you.
Any questions for Bob? Sorry about that. Any questions for Bob? Hearing none. I will make the motion that the board approve, no, wrong one. Oh, I just set it down, here we go. I have moved that the board approve base bid line item number one of five hundred and forty-two thousand by Jackson and Associates for the roof improvements project. For Oatana Public Schools.
Second.
Tim has made the second. Eric, a roll call vote, please.
Nikki?
I.
Tim?
I.
Jolene?
I.
Mark?
I.
Christina?
I.
Lori?
I.
And I myself, an I, seven oh vote.
Motion carries, thank you. Last item tonight would be gifts to the district, one more time, Mr. Elstad.
Thank you, so our gifts to the district this evening. Come in the form of a number of different, there are some gifts from our Music Boosters of Oatana for our elementary honor choir. Some also, some anonymous meal account balance. Gifts to make sure that we're taking care of our students, as well as some gift cards, and again. Our community is very giving and recognizing that some of our families have a hard time paying for those meals, and so they've stepped up again. To provide that support. At this time, I would entertain any questions that board members may have about the particular. Gifts to the district this month.
Hearing none. I will make the motion that the board approve the resolution for acceptance of gifts as presented. Jolene has made the second. Eric, the. Roll call vote, please.
Nikki?
I.
Tim?
I.
Jolene?
I.
Mark?
I.
Christina?
I.
Lori?
I.
And I myself, an I, seven oh vote.
Eric, thanks, that motion carries. Before we adjourn tonight, and this is a good opportunity to speak. On behalf of the board, and this would be directed to Mr. Elstad, members of his administrative cabinet, the principals, teachers, EAs, paras. The people that work in food service, the office staff, the, the buildings and ground folks, everybody that works for this district. This has been a Herculean effort over the last two weeks to be able to pull this together and spin on a dime as you have done. And just get this done. For the kids of this district, it has been unbelievable how quickly things have moved. From just two Sundays ago, when I walked into the boardroom and there were extension cords and computers hooked up. And the administrative staff and the cabinet were here working on a Sunday to pull things together to know that. The represented, representation from OEA was here in the afternoon, and by that evening. Hardware and, and computers were being distributed to the kids in the district that needed. This district really responded, and I just can't, I can't thank Mr. Elstad and the staff of the school district enough. For really turning the corner and pulling this together for us. I would open it up to any other board members that would like to make a comment or offer a, a thought here at this time.
Wells, thank you.
Okay, yeah. With that. Heck of a, heck of a meeting, heck of a different format, welcome to our newest reality, folks. And one more time, Eric, we will, actually, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, Eric, one last time, we'll do a roll call vote to adjourn.
Correct. All right, Nikki?
I.
Tim?
I.
Jolene?
I.
Mark?
I.
Christina?
I.
Lori?
I.
And I myself, an I, seven oh vote.
Motion carries. Thank you, folks, have yourself a very good night, we'll see you soon.